Say again, as she normally does, the chili kickoff.
Is it a race or is it chili? Chili kickoff is already done. That's what I thought it was, I didn't read.
She, she also does, she uses the race order and she raises.
(inaudible).
Public care, three's of public care to consider approval of the certificate of public convene necessity to modern transport to operate a taxi cab service and turn to, um, audit Dennis to operate a shuttle service. Presentations and other communications to the council, um, opportunities for entertainers, um, to provide, um, solutions to stop team violence. Oh. Right needs to.
Mark Spook.
Percy Rogers.
I'll bet she's coming. So I, I don't, I mean, she can't even walk, so I don't, you know.
Eddie, um, Erbys, Richard Hill, um, Reverend Chili Flowers, Shuila Dolly, and Reverend Father Graham. Order settled over sixty-four, zero three four, um, we build a property, uh, coffin causeway in Dunlop, R one to I two, and I two to I two. This is for real three five, we're zoning property located on Rockland Park Drive, Michael Woolmore from R one, be free to be free. And since resolution settled over, forty six four eight, I rarely rename Russian Drive to Reverend David Campbell Senior Drive.
(inaudible).
Yeah. They might not.
(inaudible). He goes, any have a?
I mean, they said it was, no, 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 nothing particular, but they said it was just gonna be here today. Not today. Oh, no, not today.
Okay, okay, we'll just, we'll sleep on that.
Yeah.
Resolutions settled over, zero eight four nine four, approved purchase order to drive Chevrolet, four fifty-nine Chevrolet Tahoe, please package SUVs. Zero eight four ninety-five, approved purchase order to Skyers Ford Lincoln, four seven four score SUVs. Zero eight four ninety-six, approved purchase order to Metalback three, for rapid response fire load. Zero eight four ninety-seven, approved purchase order to Gasol, who's the amplifier that monitors the stage viewers from the second theater. Zero eight four ninety-eight, approved purchase order to Zeeville Sporting Lights, Sports Lighting, Field Lighting for Matthews Park Baseball Field. Zero eight four ninety-nine, approved purchase order to Zeeville Sports Lighting for Field Lighting for Biggish Park Baseball Field. Zero eight five hundred, approved purchase order to B A P T R for ten, tennis court, um, drying machines. Zero eight five oh one, approved purchase order to Bagdian Russell Electric Company for street lighting, parts and repairs. Zero eight five zero two, approved purchase order to Kingston Power Services for emergency generator for M P D first policing. Twenty-one five oh three, authorize a contract with profit in their gold consultant services for the whole Riverfront, Biggish Mountain Project. Twenty-one five zero four, authorize contract with Deep Heart for cybersecurity services.
Um, this, this one, this item, uh, in review, the insurance certificate does not list the city as an additional insured. Twenty-one five oh four, authorized contract with Deep Heart, L O C, cybersecurity services. Recently, um, myself and maybe others have found that some of our allocations from a discretionary fund standpoint, those payments have been delayed by weeks and some months because there's some trouble with making sure insurance is right and all that sort of stuff, and I just wanted to point that out, that this one here doesn't have additional insured. It has some program today.
Yeah, but it probably, it would, it wouldn't, I mean, this.
You know, you and I feel the same way about some of these things.
No, it, it, yeah, it wouldn't, this is for cybersecurity, you know, they're not doing anything that would cause them to be sued and us to be sued along with them.
Do they do?
I know. I know, but they're not, they're not doing anything that would cause them to be sued and us to be sued.
I agree, and, and that's, that's, that's to the point of it, that, you know, for example, you know, Skyline's charter fund recently, um, goes on last week's agenda. I allocated some discretionary mon- money to them, five nine thousand dollars to the Sausage Security Cameras, contractors, and they're going to hire some security cameras, um, yet they, they were subjected to this standard, and then there's been, you know, several others along the way where you wouldn't think that it's a high level of risk to the city, yet we're, we're still asking them to go to their insurance agent and have them, pay the additional cost to be added as an additional insured. So, you know, you and I agree on this one, that, you know, maybe, maybe it's not necessary, but, um, I think it's not necessary in some of those other cases, so if it's not necessary for this contract, then, uh, I don't know what the policy is.
So, he- here's the deal. I, I don't think we do agree, and he- here's why. What they're doing is they're performing something for us, okay? When we ask for other people to, unless the city is additional insured, they're performing something that is public good, but for somebody else, that is not directly benefiting the city, is directly benefiting generally the public. Yeah, sometimes you can say, okay, well, we waive it, because sometimes we do. It is a case-by-case basis whether or not we waive it on discretionary spending, but if you all ask that question, we'll always look at it and tell you whether or not we should or we shouldn't, but we waived it a number of times. Um, if it's a public entity, we often waive it, if it's small enough where it's not going to affect the city, we'll waive it, but you all just want to ask that question, and we'll always take it case-by-case basis.
Yeah, I, I just, I, my only drill run with me on it all is that it's not always clear to the people that are, say, requesting it, have made these arrangements with various contractors, and then they're shrunk out for, say, two months, you know, and, you know, there's, there's one for Skywood right now, that actually John Williams approved, a year ago, nearly a year ago, on his way down, and, and, um, and it, it's still hung up, you know, there, this allegation, it was still not approved, and, uh, when, when corresponding back with the city, you know, they get things sent like this, that show this very issue that says, City Mobile needs to do this, that, and additional insured, this needs to leave this here, and, you know, this is sort of a sample, so, although it may be required, having line of sight to it, when it's not required and when it is required, would certainly be helpful from my standpoint, and I know it would be helpful from theirs as well, so that they're not waiting around wondering if it's ever gonna happen. Paulie?
I do, I do, and that's, that's a more than reasonable ask.
Yeah, I just want to caveat this, because I've dealt with this as an H O E president over flowers. It, it, it took us almost a year to get discretionary funds because we didn't have liability insurance for flowers that had already been put in. And liability insurance for what? I, I mean, and, and to say that this doesn't benefit the city, I would highly argue that point, because everything that we do with these area beautifications and security, or these security cameras that we get funding back for directly tied in to project shield, and that makes the city safer, the flowers and the fences and, and the beautification that these neighborhoods take up contributes to the city becoming a place that people want to come to. So, that's exactly benefiting the city when it, when it works collectively across many neighborhoods, but to say that we need liability insurance for somebody that's, that's gonna go, and, and all the, the funds that I approve are after the fact, that, that this is something that's already been undertaken and complete, and I don't know anybody that would see the city over flowers or fence, or, you know, if, if, if it's not in right of way, if, if it's, you know, if it's something that is conducive to the security and beautification of the area for the city, it, it just doesn't make sense to me on, on how hard we push, because that happened to me as, as president, it took me additional expense, costs, like, you know, Ben was saying, I had to go and rewrite the insurance policy and include the city for something the city had no liability for, and it did make sense to me, so I, I agree that we do need to take a closer, harder look at what makes sense and what doesn't make sense as we go through this.
I agree with that statement a hundred percent.
And, and I agree as well, because I work with a lot of community groups in the district, and, um, as a community group, they don't necessarily get insurance, they will get a five oh one C three, but they don't necessarily purchase liability insurance, anything like that. Now, if it is an organization, it was the girls' club, child advocacy center groups like that, that we give funding to, they have that kind of insurance, so there isn't a difference, you know, between, between the groups and the kind of work that they are doing, and I've had one community group telling me that they didn't want me to give them the funding directly, because they didn't want to have to take on the liability insurance, so I had to give it to, and this was to plant flowers, and to give it to master gardeners who agreed to do the work, you know, so, um, yeah, if we did look at that to make it easier for, for these groups, because a lot of times we do go for a very long time, and of course recently, we've had some other issues with, um, you know, staffing and healthcare and that kind of thing, which backed up the system, but the insurance is something that I, I agree we should take a look at for these groups.
We, we'll be happy to relook at the issue.
All right, one other thing is, is for this particular contract, it does say in their contract that they shall name the city as an additional insured, and they're not, the city's not named as an additional insured on the certificate, so I think we need to get their certificate updated for, on, on contract to, to, as you were saying.
So that is something that we do as a check and a balance, we always go back through and look to make sure that folks have, because there was a time, and we'll relook at this issue, but that's something that we do as part of our protocol.
Can you go down?
So, so on this contract today that we're about to approve, you're saying that we should approve it without the city mobile listed as an additional insured?
Yes, but the mayor won't sign it until we get the actual document.
Okay, so that level of flexibility, I appreciate it on this contract, I think this is a good contract that we need to execute, I just, again, hopefully that's extended to all of us on our discretionary money.
Everybody good?
Thirty-one five zero five, authorized grant application to ADECA for electric vehicle infrastructure program.
Yes, I'm vice president. On this item here, I don't, I'm not sure what all this, I mean, we're committing fifty thousand dollars to this potential, uh, grant, what is the, this infrastructure program, what does this consist of?
To install charging stations at various locations for city, uh, vehicles and potential public use.
Do you all have those in mind, where are those are gonna go?
Yes.
Where, downtown, or?
Uh, they're scattered throughout the city, actually, mostly at city facility type locations, so, uh, the WAC, uh, Gale Street Complex, different locations where we have city vehicles, when it's possible, we love it to be co-used for the public so that we can get a better opportunity to be able to receive the funding, because you get rated higher if you, if they're available to the public as well.
All right, are these, uh, are these a particular brand, or?
No, not, not, currently we haven't gotten that far, it's just a matter of saying we want to install somewhere along with these locations.
Then they give us the money and then we go?
Contract, we sell it.
Source?
That's right.
Suppliers for this. Okay, thank you.
Thirty-seven five two oh six, considered approval of a certificate of public convene necessity to care for this help here to operate civilian service. Considered resolutions being introduced, zero three five ten, point Roger Graham to the golf course for private meeting. Thirty-seven, five eleven, five twelve, five thirteen, they're committed to a full two day seaworm for issues of especially dense retail liquor license to barbecueing with my honey or the arm blues on the river at Cooper Riverside Park, issues of especially dense retail liquor license to lift cigar lounge, support city summer bash, Cooper Riverside Park, and especially dense hotel liquor license to lift cigar lounge for City of Mobile Fourth and July celebration in Cooper Riverside Park. Fifty-eight, five fourteen, and five fifteen are declaring weeds noxious, uh, group sixteen twenty-nine and assessing cost removal of weeds, group fifty-four. Sixty-five, sixteen, and five seventeen are group award special bonus to the parks and recreation every other month, and to the public works at large every other month. Resolutions being introduced, zero eight five eighteen, approved purchase orders for fuel and wave transit. Zero eight five nineteen, approved purchase order to C W government for seventeen iPad tablets and accessories, twenty-three thousand, twenty-four dollars, eighty-six cents. Zero eight five twenty, approved purchase order to Coastal Tree Company for right-of-way tree removal and limb clearance on Airport Boulevard, one hundred eleven thousand dollars. Twenty-one five twenty-one, uh, across Andrick and Fresh Price Services for right-of-way , um, one services Michigan Avenue between South Broad Street and California Street, and twenty-one five twenty-two, five twenty-three are also for, um, right-of-way boys services with Butler Complete Services and Seaport Enterprises, and those are between, uh, Zillion Road between Michael Boulevard and Monica Cliff Drive, and Belet Road between Longwood and Cody Road. Twenty-one five twenty-four, authorized contract with the order is two of the Gulf for citywide resilience assessment plan, four hundred twenty-nine thousand, sixty-two, seventy-four dollars.
My, my vice president? I, I read through this, uh, script of work and everything here about resilience, and I, um, what, once that this consultant produces this resilience plan, or resilience assessment and plan, what do we do with it? I mean, once they have it produced, what do we do with it?
So, once they identify, they'll identify goals and objectives that the city should work towards to make the city more resilient, everything from homelessness and blight to resilience against storms, uh, others, you know, severe shocks to the city, um, so we'll have kind of an action plan by which then we can identify which things we want to go after and try and mitigate to make the city more resilient moving forward. Happy to share an example from another city, Houston, the same company did one for Houston, Texas, happy to share that one with you, you can take a look at it and see an example of the types of things that they, uh, would likely see in Mobile.
And I don't see anything in here about homelessness or anything like that, I, I see in here that this is performed by the Waters Institute of the Gulf, you go to their website and you read through what they do, it's generally based around water, which I appreciate. Uh, my, my concern at this point is that this is assessment plan, and myself and Councilman Small, we, we have a large portion of the rivers in our area, and there's nothing that really narrows this in any sort of way to specifically look at those areas, and it really came to head this weekend, I took the girls out, went out on Dog River and Halls Mill Creek and everything, enjoyed the weekend out on the river, and about a year ago, I remember, there was a pretty substantial sewage spill, um, over on Shipyard Road, through the malls, and it just pumped sewage, just blew out the river, and as we were out there this weekend, we, we saw now, we're seeing now, really, the major impact of that, in my opinion, I talked to a guy who knows it pretty well over there this morning, that there were these blooms of growth that, it's, it's almost like lily pads, it's an invasive species, apparently from Big Creek Lake and, uh, another lake, where it has overtaken canals, people can't get their boats in and out, can't go down the canals, and then even big, large parts of the river, twenty, thirty yards off the banks of the river, these blooms are just everywhere, and then, and even in the areas where there's not, these pads and stuff, there's stuff floating all through the river, organic growth, whatever it is, it's not really attractive, um, and, and it's my understanding it's an invasive species, but, um, so the solution to some of those areas, the solution to some of those areas, especially, uh, in cycle shores and some of those other areas, like it or not, it's stretching, to, to go in there and, and dig out some of those areas that have just not had a sort of attention they need over here, so this resilience study here is as good a time as ever to specifically identify those areas that need this sort of attention, and my concern is if we identify this resilience plan citywide, we're gonna focus downtown?
No.
We're gonna focus at this area, in that area, but we're not putting enough attention in the areas that are really being impacted much.
That, that's not true, it's an entire city assessment, and they're gonna look at all areas to include urban, coastal, wa- ecosystem restoration, et cetera, they're gonna, they look at every area of the city, it's a comprehensive assessment.
Understood, that it is comprehensive, and I, I, I would just, uh, appreciate, or help, or try to drive a little more appreciation to you all now, this is not a macro sort of level assessment that needs to be done on Halls Mill Creek, Dog River, Cycle Shores, Alligator Bay, Rattlesnake Bay, Rabbit Creek, all of those, you can't get that assessment in a macro view, right? And it, it's gonna have to be narrowly focused to really dive into what the solution is so that when people do go out to our rivers, and it's beautiful out there, by the way, you all haven't been out in a while, when, when they do go out there, they don't have to face that sort of thing, they're not gonna come back again, um, so, if, if there is the ability to identify specific areas in this, I will certainly be able to do that, and I'd love to talk with Casey after this meeting, this is first read, so I'd love to see what we can do to try to narrow a little bit of this focus to that area specifically.
If I could just add one thing to it, this is not a watershed management plan?
Understood.
Which is what we have for Dog River, which really digs into the science of what's going on on the waterway, but this is a, this is a little bit of a broader scope and a broader perspective, and it looks at policies that we have in place, as well as policies that we need, but absolutely, we'll be looking at what are our environmental challenges, and how can we address them as a city and a sc- some of the things fit in our world, some are A D Ms, some are counties, so we have to look at that holistically, and that's a lot of what this will do, but I'm happy to dig into that more with you, absolutely.
Yeah, my understanding here is just, just based on what it says, is that this will establish a baseline understanding of the resilience of mobiles, communities, institutions, businesses, and systems to chronic stressors and acute shocks the city faces today and into the future. This assessment will be granted in the best, grounded in the best available and localized science and data on climate, social, and economic projections. So my point is that in order to ground this in the best available localized science, then that localized community, there are guys down there that know better than anybody in this room, better than anybody in this city, that know this problem, and how to solve it, and have been around it since the sixties, and how it got to where it is, that their consultation is paramount when deciding how to fix it, and there's nothing in here that guarantees that their consultation will happen.
But, but, so, again, this is an assessment, and then a plan, and then we will act on that plan, and at which time they would, we, we, the collective body would decide which things we want to act on, and that would at that point say, hey, we want to focus on that watershed, because it's identified as a significant challenge, and we would, they would, there'll be a second step, but first we have to understand what's, the issues are, and what the plan of action should be to move forward, that's what this does. Without that, then, we're only going off of individual things.
Thank you, I, I look forward to further discussion.
Can you go down?
Twenty-one five twenty-five, authorized contract for red conditioning for H back Franklin, German mare, and various facilities, like to see three hundred thousand dollars. Twenty-one five twenty-six, authorized contract with Goodwood Wheel, Kable, for employment projects at Taylor Park, Rockland Park, Azonia City Golf Course, and Hope Community Center, three hundred forty-three thousand, three hundred sixty-one dollars, twenty, it's in fine.
My, my vice president?
Yes, sir?
Okay, it looks like this is about sixty-something thousand dollars on Azonia City Golf Course. I, I used to serve on this board a few years ago, and, and it's my understanding that the city, and there's a shortfall, budget shortfall out there, about three hundred thousand dollars every year, the city sort of subsidizing golf, and that golf course is packed to the gills constantly, it's hard to get a tee timeout at Azonia City, and, um, they're still falling short on their budget, there was a discussion, I think the city even hired a consultant or somebody to come in and evaluate sort of the stressors and stuff of the golf course, what can be done to improve it, they put forward one idea, which, uh, I think we all sort of generally agree on, on the board, would be, uh, a good move, would be an increase in the rates that are charged out at Azonia City. It's the second best golf course in this entire city, probably in the county, I go to Grove number one, Azonia City being number two, publicly accessible, and yet we are the cheapest by far, I understand there's a public service, I'm hoping to do this, but if, Azonia City sells approximately forty thousand rounds of golf a year, and we're falling short about three hundred thousand on our budget every year, and subsidizing them, an increase of just five dollars would bring an additional two hundred thousand dollars to their operation out there, and basically what the consultant says is, wouldn't there was too much heart for anybody to raise rates for five dollars, so my question to you all, because I think this is an action you all have to take, is where are we with that? Are, are we, are we planning on raising the rates to sort of meet the market?
We are in having the other discussions since.
I'm sorry, can't, can't hear.
I was saying, from the time that we presented that plan, we haven't had, we haven't moved on anything else since then.
Since?
Since the consulting, with the presentation.
Okay, and David?
Yeah, Councilman, if y'all would like some help, I'd be happy to, I used to support golf courses, I'm a lifetime PGA member, it's my old hat, but if you'd like, I'd be happy to help.
Yeah, I, I'd be, I'd be happy to, 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 you know, move it along, bring it, let's, let's do it, you know, I think we've got enough consultation and input from everybody, it's time to take action, I don't know what that takes, is that just you, Mr. Mayor, just saying, hey, raise the rates, or is there more to it than that?
I think there's probably more to it than that.
More to it than that.
Well, and, and before we go too far in that, then you were on the board, I think the board does need to have at least some input on it, because they're out there and playing, listening to the folks who come out to play it as well, and, and it is part of a public service, how long has it been since we raised the rates, or had an increase out of Azonia, Sean, do you know?
It's been a very long time, the, the concern in what they, although they seem somewhat in competition, they all try to stay in this tracking, and so, the staff concern was, if we raise it, do we lose our long-term people who've been coming and concerns, because yes, the, the board agrees, but then, our people who've been coming, and it's a, I'm gonna call them a seasoned group that comes, are really stuck, and they come because it has maintained that price, so the fear is, do we leave them, so it's gonna have to be a lot of communication and support before we make that move, it sounds easy for five dollars, but we've had a set, and you've been out there, Ben, so we have a set amount of people that come, and come because it has maintained, but it's been a very long time since they've made a change, probably over ten years.
Because this is the lowest-priced golf course, public course within City Mobile, because.
It's one, the other one, so they sit, we sit in the mid.
Well, it's right, right of the end.
No, we're definitely not in the middle, I, I can assure you, I've, I've looked at, there's, there's a, a chart there that, we can lay it out, you can, you can compare it to every other golf course in this area, every single one of them, and it is Brian Aaron and Barnes, they do as good a job as anybody in making sure it is a premium golf course, it's a good place to play, and if you look at this chart, and you compare every round over in Mobile, this one is the cheapest by far, it's like twenty-five bucks to play a round of golf out there, and that's the reason that you can't get a tee timeout, that we're limiting the public access to only the few that call two weeks in advance to get that tee timeout, it's not like, you know, the recreational golfer, father and children can just pick up the phone on Wednesday and say, hey, I wanna play Saturday, you can't do it, that tee timeout was taken two weeks ago, because it's twenty-five dollars, it's not, it's not broad, the scope is not broad enough, the access to the course is not broad enough, because those cheap rounds are being sold week after week after week, two weeks in advance of the same people that get to play the same course every single week.
We'd be glad to look at.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to, I, I got one comment of input here, and that's, I would like to see the demographics of the ages that play out at this golf course, because when we start looking at any type of increase in. because when we start looking at any type of increase in fees in the current economy that we're in right now and gonna be in as we continue, if a lot of these individuals that play out there are senior citizens on fixed incomes, five dollars is a huge amount. And, and then we may take away the ability for them to go out there and do something that they've loved and enjoyed for decades. So, I, I, before we start making blanket statements, I think we need to see some information. I would like to see some more recommendations and stuff before we just start making rash decisions, thanks.
The, the problem with going a long period of time without increasing the, the, what you charge is that it gets so out of whack. Eventually, your expenses and your revenue gets so out of whack that you have to have a big increase. The prices, you know, the prices of goods and services don't remain static, they increase. And right now, we're going through a period of significant increase. In my mind, we'd be much better off making s- small incremental increases in the rates we charge over an extended, excuse me, over an extended period of time than getting to the point where we're way out of whack and have to do something extraordinary. I don't know how long it's been, Shauna, since, you said it's been a significant amount of time since we, since we raised the rates. I just, you, you can't go five or ten years without doing anything. It's just, it's just, the system gets out of whack. I, I don't know if five dollars is the right number, ten dollars, two fifty, I don't know. But, but I think we need to look at, look at it. I'll show you the chart.
Well, we're not gonna sell much right now, but let's do a look at it.
We'll come back to it.
Let's do a look at it and come back.
Yeah.
Thanks, Shauna, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Twenty-five, five twenty-seven, except permanent sidewalks, look for twenty-twenty-two CIP sidewalk project.
Madam Vice President.
Go ahead.
I'd like to ask this item be moved to consent. The contract put down is on the sidewalks right now. This, this additional piece came up at, very recently and uh, what we'd like to do is go ahead and get the easement approved so the contractor can, I mean, he'd write at the end of the project so we don't want him to move away and then have to come back. So, uh, this is a visual area in one of the country called Mobile, the country clubs in agreement with granting the easement. I'd just like to ask if we move it to consent so we can go ahead and figure it out today.
You have a problem, huh? Ben, you're on there too.
It's, it's part of, one reason it's on, one reason it's on there is because this was a project that included sidewalks in both five and four.
Just take that one out. Thirty-seven, five twenty-eight, five twenty-nine are proven, this is good for the public weeds and accessory to, um, to art independence and water transport. Twenty-one, five thirty-two, authorized contract for ransom ministries. This is an addition for litter pickup, twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Madam Vice President.
Yes, sir, was there a, John?
Is there somebody here who could give us some information on this? Looking through this, thirteen thousand dollars a month, even though it's a sixty-day trial period, I'm wondering what, what exactly this is and what's the, the concept behind this. So, before this goes to a vote next week, I'd, I'd like to know, to me, this, this seems like a pretty high price for litter pickup in the city, thirteen thousand a month. So, I'd, I'd just like to get some more information on this before we vote on it.
And, and we, and we can, this landed on the agenda, it's a request to add it, really before we knew it was going to be on there, but my name actually should have been on here along with Casey's because the idea for the program was brought to me by Dr. Charles Dent, who does work at Ransom Ministries. So, we brought everybody in, had meetings with the administration to talk this through to find out if it's something that we can do because you all probably know that Ransom Ministries works with homeless people. They break them in, they train them, they hire them and they go out and work in the community. So, they had an idea that maybe some of their people could come and work, do some work for the city, which would be a win-win both for Ransom Ministries, for people who are homeless and who would like to get a paycheck and for the city to go out and pick up litter because we have such a bad problem with litter. So, we talked it through, Casey worked on it, Director Barber worked on it, the legal staff got together to try to put together the best avenue for moving forward. The, uh, the idea is for Ransom Ministries to select five people for now, as a test case, to bring them in, give them some skills ahead of time, they, they go through a quick training period of what it's like to have a job, to get up in the morning, to write, you know, have a checking account, those kinds of things, and then send these folks out that they select to pick up litter in certain parts of the city. Uh, the price was something that was agreed to as, I think it was like a salary thing for a month rather than hours and that's where the price came from.
So, yeah, they, the, the five are earning a rate of about nine dollars an hour. Ransom will provide the transportation, but they're coming out of waterfront rescue. Um, if they're successful, and I believe we were choosing six months, that they consistently come to work every day. They're actually in the pipeline for unskilled labor for City Mobile in which then it would go to fifteen, twenty-two an hour along with benefits at some point. And so, a permanent solution to those that want help that are homeless right now.
Right, the, the idea was to help people who are homeless who would like to be helped and to get a job and then hopefully by the end of this pilot program, we would be able to hire them on as a full-time regular employee with benefits. So, that's why we look at it as certainly as win-win for the city and for starting out doing something that the city could do to make a difference in, in the homeless population that we have, some of the issues that we're facing. Gloria, thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to see how it's gonna be implemented. Is it gonna be through our, like, the information, like, how, how will they receive the information? In what areas will they go pick up, how often, how would that be worked out?
That'll be through public works, they'll actually assign them to the areas. It'll be up to Ransom to pick up the, uh, the, their employees and take them out there and complete that. Public Works will follow up with a truck to come out and pick up the bags that they, they accumulate. Um, but those that participate in the pro, in the program consistently uh, will eventually follow into the pipeline of recruitment for the unskilled labor in public services as a City Mobile employee, which is pretty significant. So, the thirteen thousand a month, uh, Mr. Jones, is helping pay for, offset the costs of those expenses to pay these guys to do this work and that's five of them that are doing it consistently every day during the week.
It's roughly, we did that in our analysis, it's roughly a little bit uh, art, it's not quite double for a city employee to go do it, but close.
Yeah.
So, it's about half the cost of hiring five people full-time to the workforce.
And we, we look at this as like we do for temporary seasonal employees as well, so it's no different than what we do seasonally for employees to come to work.
Yeah, that, I know. I just did the quick math, and it's about seven thousand dollars a month for those five employees at nine dollars an hour. So, there's six thousand dollars a month, which seems pretty high for just operational expenses to take these guys around. That, that's what I would like to see is, you know, where, where's this other money going? And, and what's that breakdown for, where's, where's that utilization? That's a lot of overhead. Um, it's not going directly to those folks and I'd just like to see how that breakdown works. I, I love the idea. Um, I'm all for getting folks off the streets and then do a, a job and, and see that, you know, go into a, a city-type employment for these folks to have a future. Uh, but we need to be smart about how we do that.
I think Jim mentioned this, but uh, when we did our analysis of how much the average salary is for our litter crew, plus benefits, plus everything else, it's about thirty thousand dollars a month that we pay now um, in the city with our team. So, this is less than half of that for the month. It's five people plus a supervisor and I think the salaries are a little higher than nine dollars. I've got it written down and I can get you that before the ten-thirty meeting. Um, again, but it's also, they're doing their own pickup, they're doing training, they're doing all the supplies they're, they're, um, they're required to get themselves. The only thing that we are doing is telling them where to go, doing analysis afterwards to make sure that they're doing a comprehensive job and then we are picking up the bagged litter. And that's gotta be worked out at regular locations, but they're using, they're gonna be utilizing our tools um, for how they do reporting and so there's a lot of, there are a lot of kind of parameters that we're working to make sure we're carefully putting on them to see if this two-month test project, and I want to be really clear, this is a two-month test project, to make sure that this is something that we want to engage in long-term. Our hope is that it is because again, it is exactly what Chief Barber said, it's a pipeline, a development of folks who could come in to work for the city, whereas we're not getting a lot of, I mean, we, we budgeted for ten folks to work in our litter crew this year, we couldn't get them hired and we still haven't even at the fifteen, twenty-two an hour yet. So, what we're hoping is that we, we are doing the training, the analysis, the getting folks ready to be able to be there. The salary numbers are really clear in, in the documents I have and I'll get those to you, but there's more to it than just the, than just their salary. And there's, um, you know, there's workers comp, there's, there are benefits, there are, uh, I'm not sure what the benefits are, forgive me. But there are some staffing pieces that, that, uh, Ransom Ministries also has to include in their budgeting. But it is five plus a supervisor. And then if we want to do more, we can get that to six. If we want to do less, we can get that down, but I think, um, my hope is that we, that this works in a way that we actually double that budget and we get them with ten people a month doing even more. But I will give you the exact numbers on that, I do have it in my stuff.
Yeah, and then this is a first read, so any questions can hopefully be answered during the week. Matt Armbruster has been out of the country, but he will be back in town and I'm sure he would be more than happy to come and speak. If anybody who has questions, uh, he'll be here next week as well.
There you go.
Anybody else?
Madam Vice President.
Yes, sir.
Um, Casey, can you tell me what, what's the size of the crew right now that we have for the litter?
I believe we have six on the litter crew right now.
For the whole City Mobile?
And they do a really freaking great job for what they have to do. Not perfect, uh, but there's more to do. I think adding these additional five would be such a helpful, such a huge help and a huge benefit to it. And then we also have to add on the work that Osprey Initiative does and then the work that our community organizations and neighborhood groups are doing with litter. So, there's a lot that needs to be done. Again, we need for no one to ever litter again, that would be really awesome.
And our mowing contractors?
And our mowing contractors are doing litter pickup, thank you, absolutely.
Anybody else? Compliment, we're carrying forty-one, five thirty and forty-one, five thirty-one, a call for public transit to send to the vacation of a portion of Virginia Street in the APK container terminal and for, uh, to consider a fee for vacation of a portion of Virginia Street and these are both scheduled for July nineteenth.
This afternoon, we have a tour at Altapoint. Um, I think everybody was, tried on their own, get them, make arrangements on, on manner in case. Um, as soon as the meeting is over, we need to head out that direction because they offer a lot of lunch. Anybody else? Do want to let you all know, if you haven't seen the distinguishing event that arrived in Mobile yesterday, they will be here for a couple of weeks, so you'll probably see them around town. Uh, they do various events, uh, meet with different groups around the city, the national final, that Saturday night, it's the twenty-fifth. They will all love for you guys to come to any of the events, any of the preliminaries. Uh, I'll provide you some tickets so that you can see what they're doing. Any other announcements, Nate or anybody?
This was, this is Shauna, Shauna. Amen.
Oh, and Shauna, we had an email from you talking about the summer camps.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you stand it? That is amazing. I was at Hillsdale over the weekend, they had ninety-seven campers at Hillsdale on Friday.
Yes.
That is amazing.
Yes, summer camp is doing really good. I'm recalling you all because we have a teen camp at Spring Hill, which is a career camp. Um, so we'll be tapping into you. We have twenty-five kids that's coming every week as a pilot and uh, if you know how hard it is to impress thirteen to fifteen-year-olds, they are coming back and they're loving it, so we want to get, get you out as guest speakers.
Could, could you use one more teenager?
I'm, I'm sure.
Well, she's fourteen, she has to get out of the house.
Anybody else? All right, we'll see you downstairs.
All right. Yeah.